Thank you guys, I appreciate y'all taking time to come up and sit with us. My name is Sam Stone, I'm the Chief of Staff for Councilman DeCecio. Pretty rare that council is here on Friday morning, Friday afternoon. Council business is really kind of a Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday thing. So apologize that he's not here, but I just kinda wanted to hear from y'all what's going on, this situation, and what maybe the council could potentially do. Obviously CPS is a state function, but we have the ability to put some pressure on the state. And we also have the ability, you know, working with our officers here to talk about the City of Phoenix policies that we lead to those situations, and how we can potentially change some of those to make it more equitable and just make sure that our officers aren't helping exacerbate many problems. So, I'll let you guys kinda lead off, I'm basically just here to listen to y'all.
Well, we have some families that are represented here. Most of these families have all had their children taken, some for unsubstantiated reasons. And the problem is that they're having, and I'll let each one tell you kind of their own story, is that they don't, the process to get their children back is nearly impossible. So what's happening is, the state is keeping these children under their care for this period of time, and during this period of time, now these parents may or may not have representation, which all the ones we're dealing with right now have had no lawyer representation in their cases. And what they're doing is they're unlawfully adopting these children out while they're in the process of reunifying their families.
Yeah, y'all, y'all need to pardon me, because I don't know enough about this issue, so I'm gonna ask you guys some questions as we go here, so. Is there no, other than the same or public defender, but is there no mechanism that are in there to make sure that they have representation in this situation?
Well, Sam, they're not entitled to due process, that's a big problem. It's something that should, that should change.
The interest.
One thing I think the City of Phoenix could do is pass a resolution calling on the government, the legislature to require that DCS agents that come and do these investigations, their team of workers, no longer be allowed to lie. Right now they're allowed to lie in a report if it feel like it's in the best interest of a child or necessary to facilitate a kid, a child being taken out of home, that's the policy.
Allowed to lie, I mean, that's in the policy, or is this, there's no punishment if they?
I'm reading a case.
It's a common practice.
It is common, and one of the things that they, they said, they said they seen paraphernalia in a home, and a couple of days later they called, CPS notified about it, but no one was charged with that paraphernalia, no one went back to check to see if the paraphernalia was really there, and they just took the baby. Now the mom, in the process of trying to get the baby back, in this baby, the case I'm talking about right here, the baby was actually caught in the middle of a pedophile ring that was busted by the FBI here in Arizona. Then the baby was placed in another home.
Boiled.
Boiled, in a hot bathtub, eighty percent of the babies. She's right here, this is the mom.
What's your name, ma'am?
Michelle Colton.
And she's on the way up from Tucson, she and her mother had a huge profile piece in the Republic about what happened to her daughter, it's absolutely crazy. And now, she's taking, filing a federal action because, again, DCS adopted her daughter out to someone in California maybe.
Changed the baby's name.
And so you don't, you don't, you're not given any information about that?
No information. No information, no visits.
Still her baby.
And the grandmother in being?
Moved out here from Oklahoma.
And they told the grandmother that her house wasn't?
Didn't have enough.
Yeah, didn't have enough space.
So she?
Baby and the grandmother.
So she moved to a two-bedroom, and they denied her still.
It's common practice, they're going to deny families their children, their grandparents and cousins and uncles and nieces.
Even when they have other family members that wanna step in.
Access to their own family.
So, my understanding is the official policy theoretically is that they try to keep kids with the families, but, but basically that's not being followed at all.
Correct. That's not being followed at all.
I have another lady who's on her way, she had to take a lift because she didn't have on the right shoes, and she was at the emergency room with her daughter. She, she said that she spoke to the security officer and said, you know, "I'm gonna leave my daughter here real quick, but I'll be right back, I'm gonna go get us something to eat." When she came back?
From the cafeteria.
And she was going to the cafeteria, right, in the hospital. And she came back, and a social worker had threatened her and wanted to know why she had left her daughter, I guess they had tried to call her, or whatever. She essentially got into an argument with the social worker, the social worker threatened to call CPS. The social worker called CPS, and they sent her a letter. She went to CPS with her daughter as requested to find out what was going on. She said, you know, "I didn't do anything, so I wasn't really worried about anything happening." And she says she got there, and they separated her from her daughter, and she said the next thing she knew, she seen her daughter ride away in a cab with some man. And they told her they did this because she left her daughter unattended in the emergency room. Now, she said they cut plugs out of her hair, they tested for drugs, and different things like that, and they have her on a supervised visitation plan. Now, she has pictures of her daughter before and after, this is traumatizing her daughter.
Now, Sam, I know there's some parents too that did drugs in eighties and nineties, and they're making them take drug classes because of that, even though there's no proof or any reason to believe that they're on drugs now before they can give their kids drugs. That's crazy.
Parents are also having their children taken because they have medical marijuana cards.
Yep.
And that's not right.
And that's something they're putting in the reports.
They don't have any.
Subject as a medical marijuana card, and therefore, is that correct?
Well, what he's saying is, is that it's a lot of hearsay, and there is no due process.
They use medical marijuana.
And they don't go.
They don't, they don't define between someone with a medical marijuana card and someone who's doing drugs illegally.
Also, my daughter was taken, or my kids were taken because my little girl Chloe collapsed in the care of a babysitter, and the seventy-two hour report turned into six hundred day temporary dependency. And then they came back and stole my kids from Nevada after our case was fully dismissed. And, like, everybody was dismissed from it, made up false allegations to come across state lines to Nevada and take my children, like, Chloe. This is last week. Although that was in August, and then they retaliated by coming back to Nevada and taking my daughter.
So the case was dismissed?
The case was dismissed, no, the case was dismissed here.
Dismissed here.
Yes, it was dismissed here fully by Judge Cohen. And yes, it was a Title VIII guardianship, but our rights were still intact. He did not terminate our rights, and he had no restrictions on us, and he allowed us to do as we pleased, everybody was out. And then another thing is, my son, whose name is Ian, I'm not gonna say his new name now, but he was forcibly adopted, because they said for them to do the guardianship, we had to give up Ian. That's the only way that they would do the guardianship.
And Sam, they're going to have the kids at what they call highly adoptable, and they got these whole, I call them the cute guidelines. So they're cute kids, they'll never get them back, because they have different categories, highly adoptable. When I see all children as being the same, I wouldn't understand why they would put a preference, the state, not a private adoption agency, but the state, on, you know, why there's a, why is there even a category of what they call highly adoptable?
Also, sir, with everything with our daughter passing away, from 2014 to 2016, when our case was dismissed, everything was unsubstantiated by the Abenel Police Department, by the medical examiner. Everybody found everything that was always passing unsubstantiated. And they literally keep on lying and lying and lying, and like they say, it's, they go by hearsay.
So what are they saying now?
What they're saying is that my babysitter murdered my daughter when it was thought unsubstantiated by the Abenel Police Department.
But still, it's the babysitter.
Right. All three of my kids were taken based off of a closed case, a three-year-old closed case. They took my first son, and then that case.
Do you have another memory stick for one of those rungs out, so that I can jam in here? I'll share it with you.
It's on file.
I have seventeen.
They took my first son because there was an accident where he fractured his skull, they sent me to jail and tried to press charges on me for charges, but the DA dropped all the charges and had me released within twenty-four hours. And then, they still didn't wanna give me back my kids, they ended up closing the case and severing our rights, and then we decided to have more children, and then they came back and took that child based off of the first case, even though the first case was already closed. And every time we have a child, they come and take our child based off of that first case.
And that's the reason why they were trying to take my daughter up in Nevada.
So basically, once you're in the system, there.
You're in the system, you gotta hit the song, you're up from bright red target.
They have, they have rights over unborn children.
And that's not fair, because that's taking our rights to family, especially for us, because we were in CPS custody our whole life, we never had families, I never even had parents. So by them taking away my children, they're taking away my rights to family, because I never had a family.
Yeah.
That's all I've ever wanted.
Sure.
And didn't they tell you, according to Marissa, that the children will be better with foster, because they were not capable of?
Yeah, they used that against us, that we were in foster care, that we couldn't have children because we never had parents, so we wouldn't be able to properly know how to take care of our children.
They also use disabilities to take babies away.
Which is actually, a US code, ADA law prevents any disability from being used against a person.
So y'all know how they're getting around that right now? Because usually the ADA is one of those things that, that local and state governments, I know we tiptoe around it here. So how are they, how are they getting around it?
Well, here's the question, DCS is immune, they're not auditable.
There's no accountability, there's no eligibility on.
The legislature tried, and the governor's office talked to the African-American Commission of Justice and said, "We cannot audit them." That's crazy.
What?
As far as, as far as nothing, I don't mean monetarily, I mean, obviously.
No, yeah, yeah.
It's insane.
Also, I feel that the CPS, DCS needs more body cameras, like, police officers and everybody else. I really highly suggest that they have security cameras.
And they're taking children when there's no real signs of physical abuse or neglect.
I read a report, and it said child appears uninjured.
If you read.
And they took the baby anyway.
If you read their story in the Republic, and a lot of the stories that are reported in the media, they will tell you that DCS is not shy about lying in their reports, they will say that, "Yes, we lied."
When they took him from me, they complained of abuse neglect, my son had a forensic evaluation by the police department, Mesa PD.
Hey, hang on one sec, sorry, I have a eleven thirty, I'm having a meeting with staff, so I can continue talking with you guys, so, just real quick, if I can, would you have me? I'm pretty, I'm pretty updated on that, with the, with the working groups the other day, so I'm pretty good, they're updating the text around it, if I have some questions, I'll raise your call back, I'm pretty sure it was sort of fun. Sorry about that, guys.
We appreciate it.
So when they took him from me, Mesa PD did a forensic eval on him, and the detectives all, they spent hours with him, they coerced me into giving him to the police officer, they took my partner in the vehicle with them, dumped my partner five miles away from my home, I had to go get her, confiscating him, like I was some, like, I was a criminal, like, he was a criminal. They get you to DCS, they do the forensic eval, and I have a copy of that report. The police and the detectives all say the child is not abused. CPS said, "Well, this was their excuse, we know for a fact he's threatening to kill everybody." I never threatened to kill anybody. But in their, their own words, the CPS workers, in my case, his case escalated from another case I had, I had guardianship of my baby cousins, I was increasing the exposure to the doctor. When CPS got wind that I was going to adopt them, my whole life had been turned upside down for four years. It was a constant battle, I still have yet to see my own baby cousins because of what's been going on.
Anybody here accused of being a pimp or prostitute or a drug dealer or something like that? That was a difficult complaint.
Drug addict.
Drug addict.
And again, they're doing this without any, any evidence at all.
They use your past. I'm a licensed massage therapist through the state of Arizona.
Which they hire for their sacrifices.
Yeah, I know, right? But yeah, like, I got my licensed massage therapy in Arizona last year, and they were accusing me of this since 2014. But the thing is, like I said in my trial, under the Arizona statute, it flat out says, like, you cannot be a prostitute or be anything similar if you didn't obtain a massage license through Arizona or anywhere.
Right.
So, yeah, but they're still slandering me by calling me a prostitute, saying my husband's my pimp, when my husband's an automobile pimp.
And they have nine.
It's a rough job for a pimp.
Oh, right.
It's a sick job. You're not leaving, hold on.
Also, I wanna mention too, from my knowledge and everybody I've talked to, my kids are the first ones to actually go against the state of Arizona against Judge Welty's decision, and sue the state of Arizona for terminating our parental rights to our children.
I was really shocked to hear Judge Welty, you know, that can happen, I mean, no idea about that, that was really surprising.
That is surprising, yeah.
So I'm just asking, because like, up in Nevada, we, Arizona called over to Nevada numerous times, like, multiple times every single week. Nevada came out and investigated, and everything that Arizona was saying, and they found everything to be unsubstantiated. And like I said, we still have our ten, yeah, we still have our ten-month-old daughter, and when they seize our ten-month-old daughter on June fifth, we went to court seven, two hours later, and the judge literally demanded to bring the kids, or bring my wife back and say that this was a malachal surgery seizure of a child. So I'm asking for my kids to be returned, because there is nothing, no reason why we can't have them, because we literally jumped through every single loop that DCS ever asked us to do, and we got our cases dismissed, and they are double jeopardy, they're doing double jeopardy on my family.
How long have they been in the system?
They've been in the system since August fourteen, twenty sixteen, or twenty fourteen to April sixth of twenty sixteen. Then they were retaken on August twenty-fifth of twenty sixteen, and my rights were terminated and found appended all in one day on May twenty-third, twenty seventeen. And that's my son's dad's birthday, and my four older kids, who have an attorney that know their rights, that's in the state of Arizona, they flat out said that they wanna come home to Judge Welty. Judge Welty threw it all under the rug. We shouldn't want our case hands now. Like, everybody, even the public defenders that we had, I went pro se, because we went over through twelve attorneys, we went through six judges, we went through two guardian items, like, nobody wanted to touch our case. And they were making up allegations when they first came over to Nevada, saying there was sexual abuse going on and stuff. And my kids did a forensic interview in the state of Nevada to find out that it was inaccurate and it was unsubstantiated. And then, they think, the biggest thing that bothers me about Arizona is the fact is, when I went pro se, they were saying, Arizona was saying that there was molestation on our son who was adopted out by myself and my husband and whoever else. And they said it happened on, it was recorded on May thirty-first, and it was started investigating on June first. Well, they didn't find us until, or they didn't start really looking for us, because they know that I'm a licensed massage therapist, and they can look up to see where my correct address is. And they found us, but they failed to tell Nevada that they were already closed and unsubstantiated. So, but they used all these false allegations to come across state lines to take our children when they were actually saying that they were, our children were in Arizona the whole time, when they were actually in Las Vegas, Nevada. And then, when we went to court and everything, they terminated our parental rights over allegations that happened three years ago, when our little girl collapsed in the care of a babysitter, because they were trying to make us do a stress, voice stress analyzer test with babysitter. And we were going to comply, but we were told by our attorneys not to do it. And then they were using that, saying that because we didn't do that, that we're admitting guilt. And then also they're saying, they keep on saying that our daughter was murdered. Well, Abenel Police Department did a full investigation on Chloe's passing away, and they found it unsubstantiated. And these are all public documentations.
They're still getting away with using their allegations in court.
They're still getting away.
To take parental custody of her children.
Yeah, and another thing I wanna mention too, which really is.
Do you know what the legal standard is that they're using? There would be a legal definition, that's why I'm wondering, what's the legal definition they're using to allow that?
No, and I know what you're saying too, and it is, it is gonna, well, just, I think just because they feel like they have rights after abuse has been called in, or they've been notified of it. They automatically assume rights.
Because that's preemptive, and it's just, doesn't make sense.
Exactly, they assume rights over your children immediately after, after they open up an investigation. Their job is to come take the baby, and then do the investigation.
Right.
And then, to hopefully get the baby back, or if they find something in the parent's background, or if they find that they've dealt with CPS before, then they make it nearly impossible for them to get their baby back.
Do you mean there hasn't been enough proof in the process?
Yeah.
To seize the kid, or to sever the parental rights?
Both, I'm asking what legal standards they're using at each step, basically.
The thing that's really bad, in my opinion, why the foster care system is so overwhelmed, is because what they're using to seize the children is nothing related to the kid's Fourth Amendment right, they're, they're actually using what's called impending danger, which sounds like it's something that's happening like right now to you or I, but their actual definition is something that the caseworker might think or feel within thirty days. So it's nothing to do with what's happening now, and if you're seizing eighty-five percent of the children for neglect, for something that might happen in thirty days.
It's ninety-four percent, according to the federal government. Arizona, out of all the states.
Ninety-four percent here in Arizona.
Ninety-four percent of the state of Arizona is children are removed for allegation of neglect. According to the federal government, Arizona is the only state in our nation that uses probable cause to take a child. Other states, they have to have preponderance of evidence, they have to have convincing of evidence. Arizona is the only state that uses probable.
Okay, so that's, 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 yeah, that's what I was looking for specifically, because that's.
Right, and see, what's ironic about that is that there's a special rule specifically states that DCS can seize a child to prevent abuse and neglect. Now, I don't know when DCS workers became fortune tellers, because they certainly aren't getting paid for that, but they can't predict that a child is going to be abused or neglected.
I, I mean, I see.
But they can lie about it.
Well, the amount seems to be the pattern in practice, it's a systemic issue.
So I see, I mean, based on what you guys are telling me, I see kind of three things that, as far as someone inside the government looking at this, is, one is changing that standard from probable cause to a higher legal standard.
Absolutely.
Right? Two is related to false testimony, if they're going to submit false testimony, there should be penalties, you know, I mean, that should be instantly a perjurable offense, or there should be a specific classification for how that's dealt with, that the punishment comes back on them for lying in that.
Well, back in two thousand and four, and about in two thousand and four, there was a US Supreme Court case, Crawford versus Washington, and it was a nine to zero vote that the Supreme, the US Supreme Court justices ruled that hearsay cannot be used in child abuse and neglect cases, nor can hearsay be used in domestic violence cases. Now, if you wanna really get to the heart of the problem, it's not just DCS, it's our court system, it's the judges that are legislating from the bench.
Well, yeah, I don't, I mean, I instantly see this as not just a problem with DCS, this is a systemic problem that goes higher and lower. So, you know, my, Jared will tell you, I'm a nerd.
Good.
You know?
But he plays, and that makes me work.
Yeah, no, he's one too. I'm a nerd, and I'm kind of a policy geek. So, you know, when I look at this, I see three areas of policy. One is the standard of evidence needs to be different than probable cause, we're the only state, and it sounds like we need to go to the higher evidentiary standard, first and foremost, that's gonna make a big difference. Second, like I said, is, and it relates to this, if, we've gotta figure out, well, this is third now, with the Crawford case that you mentioned, if hearsay can't be used, but they're still using it.
Illegal practice.
Then that needs to be addressed.
The, I went to the emergency room with my daughter, and we were in the emergency room for two hours, and I asked the security guard for something to give my daughter because she became hungry. He told me, he unlocked the door with his badge, he told me to follow signs to the cafeteria. I went to the cafeteria to get some food for my child and came back. Immediately, there was a social worker that was called into the room, she said that I left my daughter for forty-five minutes to two hours unattended in the emergency room, and then she started telling me that I had to leave the room, I said, "I don't have to leave my daughter with you." And she said, "Yes, you do," and she got mad at me, and she started threatening me, "I'm gonna call DCS on you." I said, "What's DCS calling, who cares, who you call? I didn't do anything wrong." She threatened to call DCS on me three, four times, like, if you don't quit, like, using, yielding it as a weapon or something like that. Next thing you know, the next day, I get a letter on my door from CPS saying that there was a mandatory meeting at three PM. Mind you, my daughter's nine years old, she's lived with me her whole life, we've had no open CPS cases, no police involvement, no nothing, she's an honor roll student, they took my daughter, they handed me a paper, and they, they handed me a paper, they took my baby, and then they had a meeting, and, and everything, and there was a lot of.
This is, for him, the CPS worker fabricated a lot of information, and when I stood up and said, "Flat out," and anybody who knows me that's ever been in a chat room or anything, I will flat out call you liar, don't lie about me. And that's what I did, I stood up, I pushed my, I pushed my chair back, I said, "You're lying, this meeting's over, until you can actually tell the truth." I won't be, I won't, no, I'm not gonna be a victim of your, your fabrication of anything.
The other thing I'm kinda getting from this.
Now she has scheduled, be like.
I have supervised visits with my nine-year-old daughter that I raised by myself as a senior parent. I raised her by myself, she's never missed a shot record, she's never missed a dentist appointment, a doctor's appointment, she's an honor roll student, she doesn't have any issues. They put her in the juvenile court system, and now they're talking about getting her mental health care services and counseling and everything else, because they uprooted her from everything that she knows, and put her in a foster home, and then put her with her dad, who she barely knows. We had just gotten out of family court, where the judge knew everything that was in place, and placed her in my custody with visitations with her dad.
Well, and also.
On May fourth, they took her, May tenth.
They placed him with an abusive foster family, then when they came back, they had a gun, children access to that. So they took him out there on an emergency thing, took him to, tell me, they live that place, Canyon?
Canyon State Academy.
Canyon State Academy.
Which is a juvenile, it's a liquid.
You know Colonel Long? I don't like Colonel Long, I'll take that off the record, because he was, he worked at, he worked there, he's a clerk at Versus, but he worked there when they drowned that boy, and put him in ice water and all that stuff, covered up to kill him. You know, he went to jail, a lot of people went to jail for murder of that, of a young man out there at Canyon State Academy, and there's a lot of sexual abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse, identity abuse, that place needs to be shut down. Go home and Google Canyon State Academy. That's a public, that's a public problem, that's a huge dilemma, and it's just a nightmare place.
Excuse me, my daughter also, my last visit with my daughter in the CPS, she told me that her daddy was gonna send her away to summer camp. I said, "I'm a stay-at-home mother, my whole life has been raising my daughter, why would you take my baby away from me when I did nothing wrong, for him to spend money to send her away to some camp where I can't make sure she's okay? You wanna pay it upon her?
Yeah.
Instead of pay me child support, because you just don't like me? This is just.
If they get your daughter into psychiatric or psychiatric care, or put her on some sort of psychiatric drug.
They create an inability.
Then the state will get triple the funds of what they normally do.
And they're basically trying to, you know, they're trying to.
Correct, but it is about sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year for a child.
They're traumatizing her, and they're basically saying like, "I did something wrong."
They're traumatizing her.
They actually get like eighty thousand dollars upfront.
Right.
And then they get the monthly stipends for like foster care, you know, clothing, diapers, school lunches, childcare. But if, but if they put that child as medically fragile, or, then they get triple those funds, so instead of getting eighty grand, then they'll get two hundred and ten grand.
Really?
Yeah, they get triple the funds.
Yep.
But that money is not passed to the foster children, the children that are in foster care?
Yeah, I mean, that money's not embargoed for the kids.
No, 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 no.
And they just stay.
It's not even given to the foster parents.
What is the, do you know the source of that funding, is it state, is it federal?
It's federal, it's from the Department of Health and Human Services and the Children's Bureau.
Oh, but with that, with that, with that college, that, that case, saying that they can't use hearsay, that should have affected that greatly.
Yeah.
Right, but the judges go in.
They're still doing it, that's because nobody's holding them accountable.
But the judges go in and make these court rules, and they say, in the court rules, in these dependency actions, that hearsay isn't missing.
Is that clear violation of?
It violates the Superior, the US Supreme Court ruling, period. It, you know, they're, they're just going all on hearsay. It, it, you know, they're, they're just going all on hearsay.
Or they don't, you know, hold the DCS workers accountable for perjuring themselves when they do falsely testify. I've seen that. And then secondly, you can, you know, the best way to be a child abuser is to get a job with DCS. Because then you're immune for everything that you do. That's another thing that has to stop. You know, her child got caught up in a child pornography ring and then boiled in a bathtub. Who went to jail that worked for DCS? Nobody.
Yeah, who's being held accountable for the abuse to have your children on their custody?
If they were in the parents' care, you know, the parents may end up in jail.
Sure.
Why isn't it happening to people that are in charge of carrying kids when they're out of our care?
My kids being abused in foster care. And when I go up to like Governor Ducey or other people, like they, they don't believe them. They sweep it under the rug like nothing's ever happened. It's like, I don't know who turned it.
They are warehousing kids over on Madison and where? Seventeenth Avenue? Maybe right over by the Capitol, the old DES office. They are warehousing their kids. And it's disgusting. They're feeding them. I had one parent tell me that she found out that they were feeding their child Filiberto's every day, all three meals. That's disgusting. That's child abuse.
That's child abuse.
That is child abuse. You fast food every day for three meals a day at McDonald's. That's child abuse. That's child abuse.
And when I was in like CPS custody, um, like the group home, um, staff and stuff would like make bets against the children that were, um, they figured they're in fights and they bet against them and the person who like lost, they would get restrained and then they'd get incident reports written against them. And they would, um, tell the, um, the, the kids that were taken that no matter what we say or what we do or try to tell the judge or whatever, they're not gonna believe us because what they write on these incident reports would, um, overrule us. So pretty much they could say that we like, um, we stabbed them or something or fought some kid.
Tried to.
Tried to or something. You just make up some bull, you know, and that they would, um, believe that paper over us no matter what we say. And like for my incident, or, or my case, like whenever I was, um, wanting to go to court, um, my caseworker or guardian of light would say that, um, I could go, but they need to try to get me in. But then, in all reality, they were trying to keep me out because they knew if I went into the case and I went to the courtroom, um, it'd blow their cover. So they did anything they could to keep me out. And they were telling him that he couldn't see me or anything because they feared for my safety. And like, there were so many corrupt things that was going on in CPS, like the group home manager, she was stealing the, um, client's, uh, medication and then selling them outside of the thing, out of the group home to other people. Um, she was, uh, coercing the other, um, kids, children that were in the group home that if they lied against their parents, um, about why they're taken or whatever, so she could adopt them, she would give them money so they can go on vacation, so they'd have a better life. So she could have more money and stuff like that. So they would lie against the parents, saying the parents did all the stuff that they didn't or really actually did. And then they would be taken, um, and the rights would be severed and then the kids would have, apparently have a better life. And she adopted like five or six kids and she's making a lot of money off of that. And all these kids that are being adopted are highly adoptable, are, um, they're just doing it for, uh, I guess you could say Arizona fund. I guess you could say they get more money. So it's not really, um, so it's, I guess it's a way of Arizona income. The, the adopt kids that are, um, better, uh, don't have mental issues, don't have a lot of problems and stuff like that. They're highly adoptable because, um, they can make more money doing this. If they're trying to adopt out a kid that's, has a lot of mental health issues and all this stuff.
I volunteer at the animal shelter and it's kind of bothering me quite a bit that they're using the same terms that the damn animal shelter uses. We classify pets that are.
Yeah, they're treating their children like animals.
Yeah, that's exactly.
The more damaging, the more damage that they could do to a child, the more money they, they make.
They're turning them into a commodity. And what we're talking about is the juvenile prison industrial complex. It really is. You heard the prison industrial complex with the privatized prisons and all that stuff? It's the same thing, but it's kind of softened up for children. It's a, it's a. There's so much money in the system there.
It's like a business. So the kids are the product and the cost.
And the policies are written to keep them there.
Right. And it's like never.
Well, sure, no, yeah.
Well, the more they mess up, the more they get money. Like they claim my son was disabled when he was in custody before we went to social security. When he got out, they said he wasn't disabled.
Right. I mean, there's a lot of money involved for the people who are administering that.
Yeah, because when they're taken, they get about quite a bit of money, but once they're adopted out, they get even more money. And see, the CPS coworkers actually make a ton of money off the adopt out kids. And the more kids they adopt out, the more money they get.
There's incentives for them, the more kids, there's actually incentives for them to take kids.
Yeah, they're using the money as.
Versus keeping kids in homes, they could be using the incentives to keep the children in home. They're doing the complete opposite. They're giving incentives to remove children.
They give them an incentive to find and take highly adoptable kids. And I'm gonna keep saying this girl's name because I'm not gonna stop till they make a movie or write a book about what happened. It's disgusting and it happened right here. Amy Deal. They locked her in that foot locker because she wanted an extra popsicle. She was that terribly abusive natural parents. And that state failed to take that girl out. And you know why? Because she was ugly. And she was, she was poor, white trash. And I'm sorry, but that's sick.
And like the, also, um, the kids that were, um, that are, should be taken away. I've noticed this a lot. The kids that should be taken away, they don't end up being taken away. They give you back to their parents. But the kids that are, have nothing wrong with them, have a perfect life, because they're adoptable, they'll take them. But like I said, they won't adopt out a kid that has a lot of problems, though, or is poor.
I wish, what's her name is here. I wish Heidi was here. I wish Heidi was here. Because you know what? They, they, she has the recording of, of the DCS worker she was telling me on her way here, that they would say, we're gonna take your kids because your grandkids are mixed. And that's what's hot right now. On tape. These workers are sick.
Something else that needs to change is pretty much what happened to me my whole entire case is that I was addressing my concerns for my daughter's safety. I was addressing concerns, bruises, you know, signs of.
During visits.
During visits.
Right, during your, during your visits, you visit your daughter.
So you're, you're visiting her and you're seeing these.
I would address my concerns of her bruises, her UTI infections, signs of becoming fear of men, and they were all ignored. And some of them were even blamed on me. UTI infections were blamed on me because they said I was giving her juice at the visits and it was causing them. Um, that I was coaching my daughter to become fear of men. And it was all because she was in the pet hour. So they need to take consideration on the natural parents' concerns of their child's well-being.
That's the reason why my daughter was being seen at the hospital. And they did this to my daughter to make sure that what I wanted her to be seen for. They came in with a social worker making up these votes of allegations that I'd left her for two hours and I went to get her some food. She was supposed to be seen to make sure that nothing was happening to her.
So your child was actually in the emergency room being seen?
No, they didn't even see my baby. They never even examined my baby to make sure nothing was happening to her. They made up neglect allegations to push aside possible sexual abuse.
Was that a baby's trauma?
It was that consuming.
I, I really appreciate you sharing all this with me. And DCS needs an honest budget and advice and oversight.
Well, they, they have oversight. It's just they don't have, there's no accountability.
No accountability. They need accountability.
When the judges terminated my daughter's parental rights, the judges actually wrote that they were terminating her rights because her children were adoptable. And in her third son, they, they said terminating mothers' parental rights will speed up the adoption process.
Yep.
It's like, what the hell does she have?
And every time we reported, um, my grandson being abused, they had our business.
I'll tell you two ironic things though that the state's involved with and we need to check on them. One, they talk about the adoption crisis that we have, that there's so many kids, there's too many kids.
Arizona's leading the nation.
Right. But what, so what I'm saying is, that doesn't, that doesn't jive with their push for highly adoptable. And then the other thing, you see it with the ad council on, on a couple of advisory boards for media companies. And we run the ad. It's the number one PSA that they ask us to run. You don't have to be perfect to be the perfect parent. You heard it on the radio, you heard it on TV. Well, you all are living proof that that is a lie. I can't wait to go back to that radio meeting and tell them, stop running that ad because I, I have, because apparently you do have to be perfect.
Did you ever see the training tapes that Judge Amy Anderson and Brian, uh, Judge Breen put out for new dependency judges? Oh, yeah. Oh, they talk about it. She got to do business with this to get federal funding. And Judge Breen says, I can find a better parent for any child.
It's right in, it's on YouTube. The videos are on YouTube.
The question is here is how do those of us that have had their children stolen get them back?
I wish I had an answer for you, but I'll be, I'll be, no, yeah, no, I understand.
It's a question for you. That's the question.
That they're supposed to be, I found out on, on the website that CPS, when they remove your child, there's supposed to be an appeal with their information. When they've removed your child, they're supposed to give you an option to be able to appeal the process that calls other caseworkers in to verify what these people are saying against you so that that, so that it's not a made up lie. And they're not doing that.
Also, the appeals process is getting really long for the fact is, it's like, it seems like they're milking the system.
Well, and once they have them for a certain amount of days, you know, and I don't know what it is. But they'll try to push it off and hold them just a lot of places. Halfway houses do that all the time. Hold people until they qualify for the state matching fund and all, you mom and all. It's a little scam, you know, and then they keep people out that they have to, or whatever. That was another separate complaint I'm getting. I think that's what they're doing with a lot of these kids, is holding them long enough to be able to get whatever emergency money or that they're entitled to.
Or to use against you.
I also have, I have evidence through emails of retaliation that, uh, this one lady, the Assistant Attorney General has on my tab. I have actual emails and paper, uh, paper documents that literally like, it's really ridiculous. She probably got whipped that you're here and her. So the, now the retaliation.
Wait a minute, are you, they're canceling it because you're here too?
It's retaliation. Anytime you speak up against them.
Cabin, I'm sending her home. I said, I'll be right there. She said, would you like to talk to my supervisor?
Anytime you speak up against CPS, DCS, you get retaliated against.
My daughter had to pay for this.
They put it on cost, on cost of insurance.
And she's only nine years old. She spent the night with me every night. She slept in my bed. She has not gotten away from me for, for five days, none less a month. Imagine what she's going through emotionally.
It's more trauma.
Look, I can't tell you how sorry I am to hear all this for all of you. I mean, I, you know?
It's traumatizing for me.
Well, they tried to throw me in jail saying I violated the data order.
So.
For exposing this stuff.
Well, you, you should be, you know, you should be exposing this. Um, so I thank you guys for bringing this here. What I've come, I don't know what I can do to help you in your specific situations that you could face. If there's something our office can do and. Yeah, absolutely. You know, you've got a testlet by, at city council? And that matters. And in addition, though, with some of the things he's talking about, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna put the cat on the back. But there's a resolution process of the city that's. Yeah, there, there, there's a couple of things I, I kind of started to say earlier. One is getting that evidentiary standard in line with the other states. I mean, if we're using a lower evidentiary standard, then that's the first thing that that seems like it needs to be fixed. Second is penalties for perjury. There need to be penalties for perjury for DCS workers who are committing.
Those are already in the legislature.
Well, well, but penalties and actually having it happen are two different things. Statute and enforcement. So, I mean, we obviously have perjury statutes, but we're gonna need to do some things to try to put greater teeth into that.
The election is the.
To try to get a give, yeah. Um, the hearsay, uh, obviously, you know, with a court case, that's something, I mean, I see two routes. I don't see. First, that needs a lawyer to drive it to the Arizona Supreme Court to have the Supreme Court confirm the federal court ruling. In other words, someone's gonna need to appeal one of those hearsay cases and push it to the level of the Arizona State Supreme Court.
They reject them. They deny. Every time you push it to the Supreme Court, they deny your case.
But again, you, don't, don't just assume that because something hasn't worked that it never will. Um, one of the things that, the first thing I learned about government is that it moves very, very slowly internally. And the best thing you can do is to continue to apply the pressure on them and get help and, and, you know, we'll, we'll try to help on that. Um, we can try to rally others to do it. Jared, obviously, and, and all of you have connections, but we can try to push those forward. So. And I know some of them justices, and I tell you, one of them is Clint Bowler, and he used to work at Goldwater. And another one is Lori Roberts, that lady that writes occasionally nice things in defense of children at the Arizona Republic. Her sister is a member of the Supreme Court. So.
Right, but Lori Roberts also got gagged. She was told to be quiet, stop recording. They gagged Lori.
They're gagging everybody.
I was gagged.
Maybe the fourth thing for that could be warrants. I don't know how the group feels about that, but to me, that's the big, uh.
For, for child pickup? Yeah, well, that would go with the evidentiary standards. That's actually in the first case because a higher evidentiary standard requires.
Well, the evidentiary standard, as I understand it, wouldn't really impact their decision until it gets to court, what their standard.
Oh, no, it absolutely would.
But they're, the standard they're seizing for and what they're really keying on, the actual people on the front line, is the caseworkers who think they can seize kids for neglect.
Right, but, but again, that, that all ties back to.
Put probable cause to think that something will happen within thirty days?
No. See, this is where the, the, the change in evidentiary standards. So if you go from, because right, right now, it's not even probable cause, right? I mean, that they're using. So.
It's nothing.
Right. So changing that is gonna change their behavior. Because then they, they, one of the things to always keep in mind is that one of the, the truisms in life is that government employees hate being chewed out by the courts and by their superiors. And if the courts are getting cases that they then can't proceed because they don't meet the evidentiary standard, they're gonna, that's gonna come down. So that actually would address that. But what we do need are.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I've been in this for a very long time.
Ma'am, I, I'm.
And, and judges don't let parents put their evidence on the record of their innocence.
Once the kid is seized, it's really over. It's such an uphill battle to fight it from there.
They take that child.
I understand.
They're looking for adoptive parents.
I also understand the other side of, of their point, right, is that they go into a situation that's bad, that's legitimately bad. And they wanna, you know, they wanna be able to protect that child in that situation. And you can't leave them there in that situation. So there, there's, there is the other side of that point that we have to consider with this, is that it it probably doesn't apply to anyone in this room, but you do have parents out there who do horrible things to their kids. And so you, you wanna believe the, what, what, one of my next things here is it looks like we need to pursue some better defined standards for what constitutes.
A good parent.
A good parent.
Right. But maybe you don't have to take twenty classes. Maybe you can take five or something like that.
More to the point, what would, you know, better defined parental standards ahead of it.
They're having issues or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, those things shouldn't be.
Something that I see.
Use against a parent to take away their child.
So something else I see to also hold them a little bit more accountable is they need to go through a mental evaluation of the CPS workers themselves. In order to be able to maintain their job. You're putting these parents through all these testing and everything, but yet you can be psychotic and do all kinds of.
Social workers in the state of Arizona, they are not licensed.
What was your concern? What you were saying about.
You can't define a good parent.
No, but they're, if they're using standards that, if they're using standards like, oh, there were dirty dishes there, that's a sign of neglect.
Or they have an abusive and violent relationship when they don't even know what the parent's relationship is.
You didn't say it right, but the rubric that they use, the formula that they use to determine.
Whether or not a child should be in the home or not.
Yeah, it's the same as the police. There's no, uh, there's no cutout for caseworkers or social workers. If they're gonna seize a kid without the warrant, they have to have an exigency. And an exigency for the Ninth Circuit, um, is severe bodily harm or death in the time it would take to obtain a warrant. So they could still seize kids, but they have to get the warrant if it's not life or limb right there. And the police who are on the scene, I think this is where you could really impact this issue the most, is the police who are showing up to the hospital to call to the houses. They have an actual duty to intercede if the seizing worker is taking the kid without a warrant or without an exigency.
Like in.
The police, they took my daughter. I told the police when they took my daughter.
The police have, have a duty to protect our lives.
She said she'd be right there.
Yeah.
So if we could hold the police accountable for that, if they're on the scene, I mean, they're already getting caught up in these nineteen eighty-three deprivation of civil rights cases, but we should put them on notice and be fair to them. And say, you know, you can't just stand back and be on the property or near the property if you know that somebody's having their rights trampled on, which they do, as long as it's not risk of severe bodily harm or death, they gotta stop those caseworkers.
That's why the pill process needs to be approached.
Maybe that's something we can change where we train our officers, but they have a duty to respond to parents who are challenging.
Are they supposed to uphold the law and protect us?
Well, they are, but, but you, but you don't, and you know.
A lot of the times, they don't know what it is they're supposed to do.
Yeah, it's no different than with the mental illness. We have a special team now that's, they're training all the officers, but there's a special.